We call this meeting of the Nelson County Board of Education to order on January 7th, 2025 at 5:30 PM. Please join our board team as we recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a unique meeting that we have really every two years as needed. Tonight, we'll be welcoming new board members, Ms. Lee and Mr. Gilliland. We will establish and evaluate the organization of the Nelson County School Board. We'll also be entering into some very initial conversations around board governance as well as priorities from board members for the 2025 year.
Guest comments, there's only one on the list. Before we get into this, shall I see if that person is here? We have guest comment, but Tom Hibbs is the only one that signed up. Is he here? Okay. All right. So I think we can go on through the guest comment.
So we want to begin tonight by welcoming to the Nelson County School Board two new board members, Jody Gilliland from District 2 and Karen Lee from District 5. Ms. Kristen Probus, a Nelson County Schools team member who works closely to support board members, will also facilitate this per KRS 62.020 and the oath of office. And we'll start alphabetically with Mr. Joseph Jody Gilliland.
We're excited to have you as part of the board's team. If you'll please raise your right hand, I'll read the oath once I'm done, if you'll just say, "I swear." I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the office of member of the Nelson County Board of Education according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, I, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state, not out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying the challenge, nor aided or assisted in any person thus offending, so help me God. Welcome. We're happy to have you.
And we'll welcome Ms. Karen Lee.
Welcome, Karen. I'm going to ask you to do the same. Raise your right hand. Once I read the oath, you'll say, "I swear." I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the office of member of the Nelson County Board of Education according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, I, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state, not out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided and assisted any person thus offending, so help me God. We were excited.
I'm assuming, am I just already sworn in?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect.
So tonight, we also really have, we have multiple conversations that occur. And each January, the Nelson County Board of Education may choose to elect a new chair person for the calendar year. The board chair is a leadership role that partners closely with the superintendent and district leaders to facilitate the board agenda and ensure board member priorities are fully represented. Again, this is a choice the board can make each year. So we enter into this conversation tonight, opening up to the board members.
I want to kind of talk a little bit about, because I think as we transition into our 24, 25, 2016, I think it's very important for me to make sure that we're extremely transparent, but also informative as we look at the roles that we play. And I will be the first to admit that I didn't fully understand what a board chair did a few years ago. I think I've learned a little bit more these days than I did before. But I think there's definitely some expectations that come with that role, and including the vice chair, it's not just a placeholder for the chair when the chair is not present. So I want everyone to understand that the role that a chair takes should have high expectations. It should be that they disseminate information from the superintendent, as Superintendent Bradley said. Their goal is to work closely with him. He disseminates what's going on in the district to the chair and to the other members. But the role of the board chair is also to make sure that the fellow chairs or members of the board understand and can ask any questions that they need to, that they provide that space to make sure that they know that they're getting all the resources that they need. So just for the community to understand what that position means, it's not just Ms. Eaton sitting up here and having control of the gavel. There's a lot more work that goes into that, and I think it's important that people understand what that role is.
So I guess we, do we have any motions to nominate? You know, this has typically been a rotating position, and certainly that can happen again. So do we have any motions to nominate a chair for the 25 year?
I would make the motion to nominate and elect Ms. Bowling, Tracy Bowling, to the position of chairperson of the Nelson County Board of Education for the calendar year 2025.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Hearing none opposed, Tracy is going to be our chair. All right.
And before we, before I actually accept this role, I want to be clear that I understand that we have a lot of work to do and that it is time for this board to get to work. And that comes with, as I believe, is really an opportunity for us to engage with and rebuild some of the relationships that have been sort of tattered over the last few years. And that comes with us engaging, engaging with each other, and that commitment begins with me as chair. My commitment is to make sure that I'm engaging with each member of this board and that I make sure that this space that we have here right now is a free space and it's a safe space for people to bring their questions and ask any question, nothing that is off limits. Because silencing any voice at this table is silencing more than just their voice, it's silencing a portion of our community. So to me, it's extremely important that we allow each other, we know we're never, that we're not going to agree on a lot of things, we know that, but that's okay. Because sometimes disagreement brings opportunities for us to dive deep and have different perspectives. So when we censor each other, that's not helpful for our community. So to me, it begins with me making sure that I make sure this is a safe space for everyone that sits at these seats. And it also, I want to have a high expectation that we have an opportunity to be engaged with our community. We have hundreds of events that go on across our district every year, and I know we have obligations outside of these seats. But when we sign on to be part of this board, we have obligations to be actively engaged with our community. And that means being present at as many events that we can, and I'll work with the superintendent and principals to make sure that each of us has space to be present at those moments. Because that's also how we connect with the people in our buildings, making sure that we are hearing everyone's voice and that we're not stuck in an echo chamber and I'm only hearing people that think like me. So I want to make sure, and I want to ask each member that they have that commitment with me, that we are going to actively be engaged with our community. That means also being actively engaged with our superintendent and making sure that we are, that we are active in our communication with him and making sure that we ask him the questions that we need and we give him space to provide those answers. These working sessions are going to be very viable and vital to the movement that this board makes over the next year and two years. So when we have these working sessions, I want to, I want to set a clear example that these are moments where we get to ask questions to the superintendent, that he has a moment to bring information back to us and answer those questions. So again, I'm asking my fellow board members to be committed in that communication and commitment with the superintendent. So with that, I appreciate the faith and I look forward to our 25, 26.
In the spirit of full transparency, we do have to swear you in because I just, I just figured that out, so that's my mistake.
Fight a duel or something.
In the spirit of full transparency, I just got, I'll take that as my first mistake of the year. So the, we'll go ahead and do a swearing Tracy Bowling as well. So we'll go back to that moment in time.
This is only my second term, so that's why I wasn't sure. How that should happen.
I feel like you took, I feel like you already swore, I guess you're just swearing again, so we can do it over here. You need to. Okay. There you go. It's also on the board.
All right. Welcome back, Tracy. We're happy to have you. Please raise your right hand, and I'm going to read the oath. Once I'm done, you'll say, "I swear." I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the office of member of the Nelson County Board of Education according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, I, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state, not out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help me God. Welcome.
Do we need to re-vote?
Yeah, I think we can re-vote.
So before I make the motion again, I would like to say thank you to Ms. Eaton for serving as chair last year and for carrying that staff. And thank you to Ms. Bowling for your willingness to show that leadership and to step up. And congratulations on your second term. So with that, I would like to make a notion, motion to nominate and elect Tracy Bowling to the position of chairperson of the Nelson County Board of Education for the calendar year 2025.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Hearing none opposed, Tracy is our chair.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
So similarly, with the next item, the election of the vice chair, the, each January, Nelson County Board of Education may choose to elect a vice chairperson for the calendar year. This is a also role that partners closely with the superintendent and the board chair to facilitate and support priorities as represented. In theory, that person would also take the role of board chair as, in the case that the board chair was unable to fulfill that role.
I nominate Karen Lee if she would be willing to serve as vice chair.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. I would second that. It's a huge responsibility. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay. None opposed? All right. Karen will be our vice chair.
The next one is one that I never really am able to make sense of, but essentially, each Board of Education shall appoint a secretary, the Board of Education of any district may appoint its superintendent as a secretary, and that's traditionally what's occurred. So it's one of those unique compliance pieces that the boards, the superintendent serves as secretary of the board, but the board does have to make that decision annually.
I'm extremely comfortable with you remaining secretary.
Thanks.
So I make a motion that Superintendent Bradley remain secretary.
I didn't even know you were secretary. But I, I say no. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All right. Motion carries.
Thank you.
So at this moment, we're going to move on to board governance and values discussion. This is something that is extremely important to me because I think it gives sort of insight. If anyone's been tuning in, you sort of got an opportunity to hear the debates, you got to hear the forum and Dr. Lee and Jody speak about what's important to them. I think it's as valuable that you hear what is important to the rest of us as well. These priorities are, not saying that these are personal agendas, these are just things that as we look forward into the future, things that become important that we really want to focus on as a district, working with the superintendent and working with staff across the district and things that we feel need to be strengthened and sometimes just incorporated. So I want to give this time to kind of allow everyone to kind of speak openly about what they feel is priorities.
And I just wanted to clarify, there are two agenda items. The first one is board governance and values discussion. This is a very introductory discussion. And the next agenda item is board priorities. Those two things may be related and may reinforce each other. But one of the conversations we've had over the past few months, and Ms. Bowling requested this item beyond the agenda, was to make sure that we were able to publicly state the governance norms and values that allow us to work effectively together. As a conversation piece, board governance values provide clarity to board members about the nature of professionalism and the role, keep us focused on the long term, ensure decisions are made ethically and in interest of students, help foster consistency and avoid dysfunction, and also allow us to prioritize opportunities to strengthen educational excellence for students. In general, though, it's really more of a way of working together. I think ultimately, over the next three months, the goal would be that we have something that we could provide on a piece of paper that says, here are five kind of key areas that we focus on as a board. Those, in theory, would also in some ways reinforce, whether it be the vision or the people, place, and purpose, or pride value, so they're not just totally out in left field. But that's really, it would take three or four months probably for the board to feel comfortable putting anything where you would then publicly come to consensus. I share that because it's a, this is a very initial conversation that allows us to start to sort through some of that.
Well, I think it goes back to conversations that we've heard and as far as feedback that we've received from our community over the last couple of years, is I think it goes back to us understanding what our roles are, but also for the community to understand what our roles are. We're not the people that you call up when you're upset with a teacher. You know, there's, there are certain things that we can do and that we can't do, but ultimately, the best thing that we can do is work together. That way, when we see the same vision and we see the power behind that vision, it allows the district as a whole to move forward. So when we're talking about our roles and clarity around those roles and long-term goals for the district, that's how I envision that to be. That goes back to communicating with each other, making sure that it doesn't mean that we're always going to agree. I want to reiterate that. It just means that we all understand there's a common goal. The common goal is students first, and then we move forward from there.
I go back to what you said earlier about the importance of all voices being heard, especially among our board, and I appreciate the desire to hear one another. And I think that we have to take, make intentional efforts to build those relationships and our relationships with one another and to be able to openly communicate and have that trust that we can be heard. And that is very important to me. And I think in connecting with that, that spreads into our community. And when I think about governor, governance values, I think about transparency. We've talked a lot about that and we hear the word clarity. But I would like to see also, as we adopt this, taking processes that bring our community into conversations and having awareness of what's happening and setting, once we've set our governance values, our own goals of what we would like to do, things that we can measure and come back to and revisit to see success. And so examples that I think of in this sense is re-establishing our work sessions and making that a place where we are learning about the processes happening in our community, in our community of schools, both community and school system. I want our community members to know what is taking place because I think that we have mixed messages and they come across in many different places, and people don't always have clarity on, for example, the steps that may be taken to address and improve literacy. And it would be helpful to have work sessions that talk about these things. They educate us and let us know what's being done intentionally. They educate us and let us know what's being done intentionally. And in doing so, it engages the community and creates awareness there. That way, when we're getting feedback and/or questions that happen, I think that's very important for everyone to be on the same page and have the same information. I've also been thinking about another side of this is when, we've lost our feed there, but in talking about that, there's talking about being ethical. And when I, part of that is making sure we have our trainings up to date and we're doing things above the board so that people, above, out in the open, so that people can see things. And so as an example of that, we talk about facility planning and that process and the required trainings that are necessary before we can move forward and making sure we have awareness of what we need to do and getting those things scheduled. And I did bring that up to Mr. Bradley in a conversation with him because I know our board has to be trained before we can move forward. And I think it's important right out of the gate to take care of those things so that we are making decisions following proper protocol.
Good. Anyone else? No questions?
I mean, those are excellent values. You know, I definitely think there's a lot of opportunity for growth on this board and definitely for lines of communication to be open. So I look forward to working with everybody.
Ms. Lee, I appreciate you reaching out to me and expressing your willingness to work with us and put children first. And I liked what you're, I'm hearing from your perspective on literacy. If anyone knows me, that's where I'm focused at right now. And I know I need to broaden my horizons and look at other things, but literacy I have a huge concern with right now. And I'm just looking to hear what you have to say. I would like to sit down and talk to you sometime, just me and you. But we'll do that on a phone call or something sometime. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So the goal would be that this conversation would form over time and we would begin to draft some statements that we feel like we would then be able to reflect on, at least quarterly, biannually. So.
I think it would be useful to see some examples too of some things that others have done. And I think that's a great way for us to learn and garner ideas.
We want to move on to priorities?
Absolutely.
So this is a very broad discussion that allows us to publicly state some of the priorities as we look towards the next year. We recognize that while three of you have served on the board for the last two years or four years, Ms. Gillen and Ms. Lee are new to the board, but they're not blind to some of the reality of the nature of Nelson County schools. So I share that with context to say, you know, each of you have your own unique context. This initial discussion of priorities will be a data gathering process over the coming weeks and months as we formulate a larger strategy with the current board.
So I want to go back to something Dr. Lee said. I think setting the work sessions quarterly and sort of having an idea of what those look like over the next four or five months will also allow us to kind of build on this conversation and also the one on governance. So I want to, if that's something that we can sort of start looking at, that would be great. So I don't want to be the one that always starts first. So anyone else want to have that conversation about what you sort of see as your priorities going into 2025?
One thing I would just like to add is guest comments is one thing that I wanted to talk about, guest comments. We've just said a lot of words about listening and I think we need to extend guest comments at least, try to double it at least. I thought we were at 15 minutes.
I will say this, the last probably six months, I think we've gotten all the way through. I mean, there may have been one or two exceptions, but we've almost got like the 30 minutes that we allotted, oftentimes we didn't even use that, you know? Like, so it hasn't been as much of a problem in the last six months. I think there, my opinion is you just have to put some level of a limit on it just so it doesn't become a five-hour meeting, but.
I just feel like the 15 minutes is just too short. Just in case, like you said, it might have been one or two exceptions, those are one two that we didn't get to hear. So if we just extend it by 30, if they don't use it, they don't use it, and if they do, they do.
I think we could also revisit the policy. I did look at it a couple of weeks ago and there were some elements of it that I felt needed to be tweaked. And we could put thresholds in if we reach a certain point and the meeting's going to be long, that perhaps we proceed with the agenda and then come back to guest comments to allow everyone an opportunity to participate, so at the discretion of the chair or the board, to ensure that the work is done, that is needed, and comments are heard as well. We could put mechanisms in place for that.
I think that is, again, everyone knows that I believe guest comments are extremely valuable to any conversation this board has. And I'm not saying that two hours of listening to guest comments is healthy for us either. But when we create an environment of scarcity and everyone believes that they're not going to get to say their piece, that's when you have tons of people sign up. The other part of that is allowing the transparency portion of when we're committed to being transparent and speaking openly, I think we're going to see that number dwindle anyway. I will personally share, one of my goals going into 2025 is to be more present and offer space in my community to allow people that live in Boston or live near Boston to say, hey, listen, Tracy's having a 20-minute session at Boston. She's going to be talking about the hot topic, you know, whether it's the local planning committee or it's policies. I'm going to be there to make sure that I have space for them to ask me questions and it's a two-way conversation, that it's not just somebody standing in front of us and speaking. I'm hopeful that us being committed to more engagement across the district, we're going to see less of that hostile environment too. And so I, you know, that is sort of something that I would really like to dive a little deeper in when we're having these priorities discussions around policies, around guest comments. I absolutely do not agree there should be a time limit. I think at, you know, the board's discretion, not just the chair, that that's something that say, you know, we have four people left to speak. I would really like to give them an opportunity to speak, but we're in a budget meeting. So can we agree that we're going to allow those four people to come at the end of the meeting and speak when we're finished doing business? I think allowing space for everyone to have an opportunity is, it's just very important to me. And again, I would really like everyone to have a moment to share in that moment to say, yes, we're going to, we're going to allow them to speak at the end. But, because I agree, we have business to do that, and sometimes those meetings are hard on their own just to talk about the finances and trying to navigate guest comments and feedback at the same time, sometimes is difficult. But we signed on for this job and this role and we should be obligated to every aspect of it. And so yes, I agree, the guest comments needs, that policy definitely needs to be reevaluated.
Can other districts do it at different points in the meeting? So that may also be, and that could be just, again, if you have a big agenda, you know, and you know, I mean, maybe you move it toward the end, so you've made sure that you got through the business and, you know, you knew what kind of time you were dealing with. So I mean, that's maybe something we could also be flexible with, you know? Okay, so guest comments. What other priorities?
I believe you just mentioned a big one, local planning committee. I mean, that's going to be a very big topic in that reconvendom.
Well, and I think it goes back to what Dr. Lee said earlier too. We've sat through training for the local planning committee, but you guys haven't. And I think it's important that we do that as a group and hear that information. And I think the superintendent, you're going to be checking on that to, or have you already checked on that?
Yeah, yeah. So the Kentucky Department of Education is able to provide training to, related to facility planning, local planning committee, et cetera, two weeks from today, January 21st.
Because I think that also gives the public an opportunity to hear that conversation if you didn't hear it before. There are different procedures that we have to follow and that definitely, you get to hear them at the same time we're hearing them. So there's no second guessing.
I would love to also explore as a board, ways we can engage our community and get feedback, especially through both our decision-making, but as part of the LPC process, to ensure that people are aware of beyond just announcement of meetings, but have an opportunity to share their thoughts and organize that in a meaningful way that we can use. And I think that can be done. And again, there are examples out there for that. I'm also thinking, of course, about academics. And I know we currently, we see our board has reporting done to that. And, but I would like to learn more into what I spoke about earlier about what are the things we are doing to engage and improve on literacy and mathematics instruction? What does that look like in Nelson County? And to see ongoing and regular updates to that end. I feel like we do a great job around what I think they call it, call it future story as far as, you know, preparing our students for that awareness of being engaged in the community and future college and career pathways and thinking through that. But I think we've got to shore up our academics. And we're doing so many great things and I would like to hear more about how those structures are being done and pulled together across the district.
I'll second that. Thank you.
I would also, just like kind of on the literacy note, I would like to learn more about kind of our libraries and, you know, Jessica Spera does such a good job. And I know she has assistants now, but just to make sure that kids have access, adequate access to the time, because I do think there's something about a library that's pretty special. And I know that there's a scarcity of qualified people that do that. But I just want, I would like to just dive into that and just investigate whether or not we can expand that, the staffing on that, and if it's worth, you know, the investment. Because I just think, in terms of literacy, I think that's great exposure for kids, so.
I've also been thinking myself about, when I went out into the community and during the campaign, hearing so much about the importance for students to have connection to their local school. And when you look at in practice, that is both the relationships that students have with adults, but also the opportunity for extracurricular work and passion work. So it's, so that the goal could be every student have a connection to something, to be part of something, either a love that they have, a hobby, but also sports. And sports have been very important and they are a means and a way to connect our students because so many students thrive and do well in school because of those extra activities. And so I think I'd like to look at a way to ensure we're getting equal opportunity for students to engage across each school and that they are similar. And we may need to look at that more closely. I don't have all those answers to that end.
I appreciate you bringing that up because one of the things that I was reading today was on the art collective that is going on in the district. And I love this. And if anyone doesn't know, the superintendent can share a little bit more about it. But this is actually where we've removed the silos. And so now our middle school and our high school art programs are working together. And I think that was over the summer, you brought someone in and they met with all of the art programs. And they talked about building healthy design programs that would work across the whole spectrum of the district, the whole county. And athletics, I've, because again, I know we are very unique because we don't have great feeder patterns. And then the transition that happened with OKH with Boston and New Haven has created some not-so-healthy environments. And if possible, I would like to see sort of something like we did with the art collective with the athletics. You know, is there a way that we can look at the district as a whole and look at how program designs are in position so that there's less silo? And less, I think it goes back to scarcity sometimes, that everyone feels like, well, we only have so many players and we need to gobble up all the good players and then, and I think it's, it just, it creates an unhealthy environment. It also creates a very unhealthy environment for the buildings and the schools that they feed. So if that's a possibility, I would really like to look at something that evaluates or audits, I guess, the district athletic design. I don't know how to put that. But I was so impressed with the art collective when that started last year. And then I read the thing in the paper today and it was, it just reinforces how positive that impact is when you, when you bring everyone together and everyone has a common, a common goal.
I guess I would like to talk about what we're offering at one high school, we'll make sure we offer at the other high school. If they are not offered work together, somehow get these kids the same, the same opportunities to learn the same class, same special classes, you know, if that's what it takes. We got to all be, make it more equal. That's one thing I'm hearing about. I would like to hear your opinion on that also.
Well, I think it goes back to, one of the things that I had written down is the innovative work that's going on at OKH right now, or not just OKH, Bloomfield Middle. Creating those programs will strengthen the high schools, I believe. Because if you think of in terms of kids at New Haven and Boston, for years, they didn't have, they had a science program, but it was a science teacher. They didn't have a science program that really engaged kids around science and all the aspects of science. They didn't have agriculture. So when, when you, you don't offer programs at a certain level, you can't really expect the high school to have healthy programs. So I think that's where, when I think about a huge priority for me, and I'm a huge advocate, and I feel like that's where my advocacy lies anyways, with middle school students. We have, and you guys have done great, do not get me wrong, what you all have done this, in '24 for middle school students at OKH in Bloomfield has been short of remarkable. But really continuing to dive deep into those programs, really starting to redesign what middle school looks like for students so that it does feed our high schools and it does provide space in our high schools to have healthy programs. And I think you would see more of an equal access, not real, again, it's not about equity in that sense, it's about everyone's getting the same opportunities. So, you know, that, that's a huge priority for me is to continue to really dive deep around middle school students. We have the people that are strong in literacy, that, you know, we're advocating for literacy and early foundations. I am stuck right there in the middle trying to, we need to look at these kids. These kids have sort of been forgotten for generations and I really want to continue to find a way to continue to uplift and level them up in a sense of what there's going on in the middle school programs.
I feel like the conversation is around, we have so much to learn. We know, I think we know things as a community and we see things, but we don't really have everything captured in a way that we can look at it holistically. And that, that to me is very important when we talk about making significant shifts and adjustments and where we're putting our funding as a school district. And ultimately, any facility discussions come back to this because we have to understand what we need academically and what our strengths are before any kind of facility decisions can be made.
So I'm just going to translate a couple of things. Ms. Lee, you just acknowledged the outcomes for academics, athletics. We do have and have been using a district benefits conversation and pamphlet for, what are the outcomes we want for students? We started that process two years ago. I do think it's going to be important over the next three months that those benefits are more publicly discussed by the board, that we have agreement and consensus on those benefits and we can reshape them as needed. But that those benefits help facilitate the conversation with the local planning committee. Because as you know, you just can't, you can't go in and say, well, make a facility plan without some constraint to say this is, these are some of the guiding outcomes and values we aspire to. So I share that as a part of that conversation, just synthesizing and bringing it back together. We call that currently our student benefits pamphlet. Each school has one, the district has one. We've also recently created one just for elementary schools that will allow us to see elementary and secondary a little bit uniquely. There's some, they, there's some parallels, but there are also some, some differences around what those outcomes can look like for.
Anyone else? I mean, I think this is a great. I mean, I think that this is a great start to us discussing openly about what we'd like to do, but I think we definitely can continue if you guys have more.
I think that it's been a priority, but just to continue making it a priority to keep our teacher pay competitive because that's just such a speaking of scarcity. I mean, we realize now what a what a resource that is and it's a precious precious resource and we can't lose them. So we not just to keep the teachers we have, but also to be attractive to, you know, to attract teachers as well. So I think we should continue in the efforts to be competitive with salary.
Yeah, and I think the program that that we've been discussing over the last couple of months where we're reinvesting, but we're investing in also leveling them up as educators and giving them the opportunity to make some shifts that that really benefit them, the students and the district as a whole. So I'm excited to continue that conversation as we move forward in the next month or so.
Our personnel are some of our most valuable resources and they are our assets. And what happens in that classroom is the most important thing to our children. And we certainly owe a lot of gratitude to our teachers. And I think to continue to foster their growth and build a culture where they can feel relaxed and contribute their gifts the best way that they can is so important. And I want to honor and celebrate them as a board.
Absolutely correct. Without teachers, we have nothing. We got some good teachers. Thank you.
So next week, one of the big agenda items for discussion is around continuing to think about micro credentialing and this rank change programming that exists in our state with the laws changed. We started that conversation in November, then we continued it in December and we're looking to continue that conversation next week. And the hyper this kind of continued conversation around recruiting, retaining and really building a community of high performance professionals is the number one priority from a district perspective in terms of long term growth. So appreciate you guys sharing that and saying that. I know that there'll be a number of team members that continue to look towards that over the coming months. As you guys know, with with decisions around long terms with salary, that also allows us to to continue to think about what gives and what takes. As you know, we can't always increase without also making some shifts in some other pieces and parts of the district. But we do know and have continued to to know the importance of that in a high inflation environment that most everyone in public service and in public schools, those salaries have not kept up with the private world. But we've made significant gains in the past five years where we we can continue to make significant gains in compensation. So thank you.
So as we move forward, the do you want to discuss the it do are you guys good with the 21st for the training for LPC?
I'm going to be out of town, but that doesn't I don't want to be like the but but I will be out of the state the week that that week, so.
Would you be available virtually, maybe?
May maybe how long do you think it'll last? It'll.
Probably an hour.
Yeah, I could do an hour. Yeah, I could do that.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Okay.
This particular conversation can focus on any of the board's priorities. In particular, it would focus on the regulatory process and ensuring that the there's a shared understanding of the nature of the local planning committee, the purpose of the local planning committee and the process to seat the local planning committee. That would be the primary focus based on my conversations.
Okay. Do we have a time for the 21st yet?
We've just been staying with 5:30 as a matter of consistency for the public.
Is there an opportunity for them to share like an agenda for the content so that if we wanted to request additional information, we would not be putting anyone on the spot? So if we wanted to know something else?
We should be able to have something by next week to share for sure.
All right. So do we have a motion to make the change for the January 21st as a working session to the board calendar?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Norman first, Mr. Gillian second. All approved? Any disapproval?
All right. So the this is also board celebrations. We just combined them into one agenda item, mostly because we have so many agenda items. We're just trying to simplify it a little further. But I was going to kick it off just because of the nature of what we're navigating. Really, there every time of year, people have different forces at play that are creating unique challenges. The cafeteria teams, the our team of teachers, transportation, maintenance, they always have these kind of moments where, you know, the days are longer, the work looks very different. And our facility team, you know, when it snows, they take on a unique burden and their job changes completely. And they become kind of the ultimate caretakers. The transportation team as well takes a especially those in leadership transportation have to really travel the county and get a sense of things. But I just wanted to celebrate the team of facility leads we have, the sense of community and pride that has continued to develop there is a powerful symbol for our schools. That's a byproduct of relationships with principals and teachers that are also taking care of each other. But it's also relation it's also a byproduct of investing in in people and continuing to see this team grow and evolve. So this is a photo of the team. Looks like they're somewhere in on a retreat. But we want to celebrate them and also celebrate our transportation team. They have been out. Just to give it for those that are watching, just to provide some context, there was about 1,000 homes that they determined they could not safely travel a bus to as of about 5:00 PM tonight, which was higher than we expected. We were we were expecting closer to 200 or 300, but due to some of the power lines and trees in Coxus Creek and northern North Nelson, buses couldn't pass weren't passable through those roads. So we're sitting at about 1,000 ish students that couldn't be accessed by bus safely. That doesn't mean they couldn't be accessed by car safely. It just means that a bus couldn't safely travel. We were hoping for a little lower. We do plan to make a decision by tomorrow, hopefully by noon or somewhere there somewhere thereafter. But we don't expect those conditions to change beyond noon, 1 o'clock. But we will be out in the morning looking at those same pathways to see what we can learn. We also partner with our local county and state road crews. They give us feedback, we give them feedback. But just so you know, Devin and the team have done a nice job of looking at the data on that. We'd much prefer if kids were in school. And at the same time, we're also recognizing reality that we can't have a 20 to 25% of kids that would not be able to ride a bus currently. So with that said, going back to celebrating these teams, that's that's I was just started off with that one.
I'm going to piggyback on that because I think the people in that picture are probably some of the most well loved people in our schools. If you go into Boston, I know Ms. Belinda is known by every student in our building and they absolutely adore her. They know they can count on her for anything. And I think they are more than just people that clean up. They're more than the people. I mean, she is aware of every child that has a medical condition in our building. She knows what they can and cannot eat for lunch. These people are true heartbeats in our building. So I think they definitely deserve to be celebrated. Anyone else?
I was stopped in last month and I had an opportunity to see our CAFE leads together. And I just have to commend that tremendous group of individuals who bring so much enthusiasm and passion to their work together and and how that spreads down to our children and the ways that they make all times of the day pleasant and enjoyable for our kiddos. A lot of love there.
Absolutely. Anyone else? All right. So I guess the next thing is we are needing a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
All right, Mr. Norman, second?
I'll second.
All right, second, Ms. Eaton. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.